Calling tonight's meeting to order for Thursday, March 5th. The school board business meeting, if you please have the attendance.
Yes, Ms. Dergan?
Here.
Mrs. Githos?
Here.
Dr. Gill?
Here.
Ms. Casalonis?
Here.
Ms. Layton? Mrs. Seither?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Caldwell?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
If you could please join me to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is one adjustment to tonight's agenda so far. 10.2, the meeting minutes for the business meeting of February 27th, that will be deferred until our next meeting on March 19th. Are there any others? Okay, seeing none. Public comment on tonight's agenda, seeing that nobody is here, I'm gonna close that and move straight to the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. We'd like to give a report on enrollment. And on the left-hand column, we have the schools, and you can see from March 1st how we've changed from February 1st. And I won't go through each of them, but if you look at the very bottom, we're at 3,013 students, and so we're up three students from February 1st. The next column, which is yellow, if you look at the September 1st count down at the bottom there, we're at 2,991. And if you look at March 1st and compare that, we're up 22 students. And the best fit model, the research that we've done over the years, shows that we're right in line with where we should be. Total enrollment according to what the research indicated was 3,000, 3,003 students. So, we're still growing and anticipate more growth for next year as well.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
All right. Moving into the chairs' report, I will be sending out tonight a link, a doodle link for everybody, so that we can get our annual board retreat to be scheduled. The topics for this is going to include our annual FOIA training, grounding on Robert's Rules of Orders, as well as going through our board norms. The dates that are on there may be subject to change. We haven't gotten the list of budget outreach meetings, so there may be an impact with that once those schedules come out. I just haven't seen that yet. Just reminder for everyone at home, kindergarten registration began on February 21st, 25th, so please make sure to get the littles registered as soon as possible. For anyone who's looking for plans on Saturday night, the boys hockey team will be at the Coliseum playing the Lewiston Devils. That should be one heck of a game after the triple overtime this past week. Late start Wednesday, yay, is Wednesday, March 11th. And for our incoming third graders, Wentworth will be hosting a welcome night on March 25th at 6 o'clock. And I know the students will be covering a lot of these as well, but there are a few people I really wanna call out. The Gaziano Lineman of the Year, this is one heck of an honor. Two linemen are chosen throughout the entire state, one offensive, one defensive, and Nate Mars won for Scarborough this year. Again, amazing. Even cooler in the fact that his older brother Logan also won this when he was a senior. So, go big Nate. If you caught this on New Center 6, varsity club winner Jarrett Flaker, yeah, another amazing senior, there's no stopping either one of those two, but congratulations on your varsity club win. Our academic decathlon won the state championship last week, again, outstanding. I believe this is the second year in a row? Or maybe even longer?
Maybe they've won for a while, yeah, very strong team.
It's incredible. And last but not least, the high school concerto competition was this weekend for the, who were the best musicians in the state of Maine, and Junior Alex Lehman won. If you've never heard Alex perform, he is an incredible flautist, piccolo player. I can't say enough good things about the talent that he has, so congratulations, Alex. And moving into student reports.
All right, so I just wanted to begin my report by touching what Leah just talked about. So, the boys hockey team, they made it to the state championship where they're playing Saturday at 6 at the Lewiston Coliseum after they beat Edward Little in triple overtime. The score was 3 to 2. It was a very exciting game. And then academic decathlon, they won states last Friday, which is a huge honor, and they'll be traveling, traveling to Alaska next month to compete in the national competition, which is very exciting. Some other highlights in sports since our last student report, girls hockey made it to the final round of playoffs, boy swimming won third place at states, and the unified basketball team came just one point short of beating South Portland in one of their most recent games. So, the key club brought in representatives from Citizens Climate Lobby, which is a climate change and environmental, environmentally friendly organization. They came in to talk to key clubbers about how to preserve the environment for future generations. And going on to the environment theme, the Environmental Club of Scarborough is running a fundraiser to help fight the wildfires in Australia. Students from Ms. Joyner's computer science class are working on a boat building project, so they were researching and planning different boat prototypes. As you can see, they were trying to put pennies in the boats and see how many they could put in without it sinking. I remember I tried doing this in chemistry class last year, and it was very difficult. It was a lot more difficult than it seems. Ms. Stan Hope's anatomy and physiology class performed an electroforesis testing lab, and apparently this is a lab where you can separate specific proteins in blood, which is very interesting and a really great hands-on experience for the students. And I want to congratulate Angela, who is in Mr. Bennett's eighth grade class. She was the winner of the middle school 2020 geography bee back in January, and she took a qualifying test online and has become eligible to compete in the state GOB. So, you had to receive one of the top 100 scores in the state to become eligible for the state bee, and that will be held on March 27th, so best of luck to Angela. And then Max had some slides that he wanted me to show, sadly, he couldn't be here tonight. So, today, children learned through play, and they are given the opportunity to learn through play, which has diminished over time with a more emphasis on the academic curriculum. This is a really great opportunity for students to have fun in the classroom, and the primary schools are really trying to honor students' needs to play and the importance that it has on K2 development. Fifth grade students at Wentworth have been working on complementary color blocking in this project inspired by artist Janet Gates. And kindergartners at Pleasant Hill have been making spots of kindness and spots of happiness to help grow their reading skills and engage in SEL. And that is all I have.
Blank it out.
Thank you, Krista.
Thank you.
Committee reports.
Communications?
Communications. I would first like to thank everyone who contributed to the district newsletter. I put out several requests, and due to snow days and sickness and kind of all kinds of various things, the newsletter's going out a week later than we had hoped, but I really appreciate everyone who submitted something. And if you wanna click the link, there's like a little, Hillary was kind enough to put a preview up, and a huge shout-out to Hillary. Back before she had a full communications committee by her side, she was kind of a one-woman show, and she did a lot of these templates that we now rely on using, but they are all on her computer, which is a Mac that nobody knows how to use. And so, well, aside from Hillary. And so, Hillary was kind enough to compile all of the written material that we had gotten and put the whole thing together into something that looks so professional and so beautiful. So, thank you very much to Hillary. In terms of communications upcoming, it's the budget. We know it's, we know that this is one of the biggest tasks that we have as a communications committee, is to not only communicate the facts and the figures, but also to, you know, encourage goodwill and garner happy feelings about all the amazing things that our budget allows us to do. And so, we have last year's budget timeline to work from, which we think was really successful. And so, we're gonna be working from that same model that we used last year. Spotlight award, our next winner will be celebrated on March 19th. And I will take a second to show everyone, look what I made. So, the flyer on my slide tonight, I made myself. I did not have to have Hillary even help me do it.
I'm super impressed.
With Canva.com. So, I had put out a request to maybe seek out some help within the district to help the communications committee learn how to use Google Docs or whatever software we have available to us to put out professional-looking things for communications that weren't, that wasn't relying on Hillary's Mac. And I got such quick response, and I appreciate that so much. Hillary actually pointed us towards Canva.com. It's how she's been making some of the things that you see on social media already. And so, as a communications committee, we are giving it a test drive. IT was able to set up an account for us, and we can all log in separately. So, 'cause one of the things we were concerned about is what happens when we move on, and, you know, we wanna be able to change out our members. Right now, we're just using the free membership as homework for the committee. We're all gonna, you know, play around with the software and see if it's something that we feel like we need to invest in the, in the upgraded version. So, stay tuned for that.
So, as usual, you're gonna hear the same thing that you almost always hear about negotiations, which is that it's a closed process, and that is dictated by the state and statutes. But we were able to make a statement at our last meeting after we had a meeting with the SEA, and I just wanted to reiterate the statement. This is actually the same statement that Amy Glidden made when she was up at the podium, but I'll just read it again, that we had a productive negotiation session with the SEA on Wednesday, February 26th, and we were able to reach a tentative agreement, which you might hear referred to as a TA, on the remaining issues from fact-finding. And then, the negotiations team was able to update the board at the very next night in an executive session. So, now, in the next few weeks, the SEA will make some time to connect with their members, and we hope to ratify a contract at that time. So, like I said, this isn't new, I just wanted to reiterate it, and then, other than that there is nothing new to report.
Thank you.
Bill, Esther, go ahead.
Excuse me, okay. So, so normally, this is like a liaison role that Alicia and I have, well, I guess, I don't know, it's not a board committee, but we wanted to put it in the committee updates so that we could just have a chance to keep you informed about what the processes are and where we are, and then also give you an opportunity during this update, if you have any questions or discussion items that you want. Alicia and I are both happy to answer what we can. So, I, just as a reminder, this is, I mean, we all know this because we chose the committee, but I just wanted to remind everybody that our committee, we're really super, super lucky with the amount of expertise that we have on our committee. We have two structural engineers, we have a landscape architect, a sustainable sustainability coordinator, two facilities directors, including our own Todd Jopson, and, and a member of the community who's a facilities director at a very large company in Maine, two school board members, an assistant city manager, and then we have the three K2 principals and a K2 teacher. And then, I just wanted to put on here that also three of these members, these aren't separate members, but three of the above members are principals at architectural and engineering firms. And I would not have known what that meant like a month ago, but I will tell you now that what it means is that they are the people at their firms who are in charge of doing the exact kind of projects that we are doing. And in fact, any of the people that we interview, any of the firms that we interview, and all of the RFQs that we received back, all of those responses, the people in charge of doing that are the principal architects or the principal engineers or whatever they might be at those firms. So, we're just really lucky that we have them, because not only do they have a really, really deep base of knowledge about the process, well, yeah, about the details and the data and all the, all of the information that goes into this, but they also are so familiar with the process that it's been super helpful, because it is kind of like learning another language. We make fun of each other a lot, because all the education people in the room kind of speak in acronyms, and they, they are like, what are you talking about? And they, but they do the same thing for, for their careers, so it's been great to have them, because we've learned a ton from them. And then, I don't know why this...
Just click that.
Oh, can you click again? Okay. Sorry. So, I did that by accident. I was trying to like make an animation, and apparently it worked, but it didn't look like it worked when I first made it. So, the second thing that I wanted to talk about is just, just super quick recap of what we've kind of done already up to this point. I mean, I know you guys all know this, but at the very beginning, when the committee was first formed, we did a ton of research on the data that we had, including enrollment, programming, facilities, and then we took some time to analyze that and talk about it and have discussions about it within the group. And then, at that point, we came to the recommendation that you guys all know about, we, that we brought forward to the board. And so, after that point, we wrote or created the RFQ, which was that request for qualifications document that you probably remember hearing about. I just wanted to, I linked to it so that you could see it. So, this is what it looked like. It's in the shared drive, so if you wanna take a closer look at it, anytime you can. But this was what we put in, I think we had to put it in, do you remember, say, like three newspapers or two newspapers? We had to publicize it in a, in a very specific way, because it is dictated by the state and how we have to do this process. So, we were able to write this up. Like we talked about, it had avenues open for either consolidation, sorry, or renovation. And then, basically, what it does is it gives you, it gives the firms that might be interested some requirements for what we expect to see in any submission. A lot of these requirements, again, are dictated by the state. They have a very specific agenda for what they, what information we need to collect. Some of it is, and then, and then you can add on to that. Some of the stuff the state wants to know is like some financial background about the company and workload, like what other projects you have that might coincide with our project. And like I said, you can look, you can look through this yourself. I just wanted to link it there really quick so that you could kind of get a better idea of what that looked like. So, once that went out, there was a deadline on that, and we received seven responses. And while that was out and we were receiving those responses, the committee worked to create or establish an evaluation or that, that would look at all the criteria that we were interested in for the RFQ and how well firms met it. And then, when we had all those responses after the deadline passed, we used that evaluation that we had talked about and discussed to actually evaluate the RFQ responses. And from that, it's, it's very similar, I can't talk about the specifics of how we did it, but it is very similar to the way we've done evaluations before, where each, each section or criterion has a number value assigned to it, and basically, you kind of end up, when you put everyone's together, with a numerical list of how people did in terms of highest to lowest score. So, in that process, three were pretty clearly floated up to the top, and we were able to, to ask those three firms to interview. So, before they came in to interview, I just really quickly put together a document here. This is also in the drive. This, I pulled a few things together for this, so this hasn't been in the drive before, and if you guys wanna look at it, it's there. But what we did as a committee was, we really sat down and thought about all the things that were really meaningful for this project to all the different committee members, and we kind of prioritized the list. And in asking firms to come and interview, we gave them our top six priorities and asked them to be prepared to talk about, as, as talking points, those, those, those topics. So, I just kind of highlighted in bold the, the main idea of each one of these. It was basically public engagement, health, safety and security, long-term planning, the small school feel, the sustainability approach, and the ability to facilitate solutions for our district. So, like I said, I know that's a lot of words, and if you wanna go back and look at it, or if you have any questions after this, we can kind of go back to it, but if it doesn't like being right now. All right. Why, Kelly, why? Kelly, help me.
You can touch the screen, just try touching the screen.
Oh, the touchscreen? Oh, okay. Can you just flip to the next slide? I know I'm going super fast, but I promise. So, I, I am trying, I think both, both of us and, and the members of the committee are trying to be really careful to make sure that we are going about this process properly. So, we did talk to the lawyers, and they were able to confirm that we can say that we got the seven RFQs, and we can name the three firms that we decided to interview. So, the three firms that we interviewed was actually, this was, this happened yesterday, it was an all-day event. it was an all-day event. And we interviewed Harriman, which is probably familiar to some of you, because they worked on the Wentworth Project, La Valley, Breszner, which also has done a lot of work in the area, and Perkins Eastman. And so, we, we did that yesterday. We did a very similar evaluation based on those interviews, and we are meeting on Monday to report out to the full committee what our impressions were of, of the three firms that we were able to interview. And then, I just wanted to talk a little bit about what will happen next. So, we're planning on having a, a choice by Monday, if, if all goes the way that I, we've planned. And then, from that choice, there will be a motion, we'll, we'll ask the board for a motion to approve contract negotiations. So, once you choose a firm, you then enter into contracts. Contracts work a little differently, a lot of different ways. Sandy will do the negotiations, and it will be, if that all goes well, then we'll be able to start working, that contract will go through, we'll be able to start working with that firm. And what that means is, as soon as they, I can confidently say that as soon as we pick somebody, any one of these three, will hit the ground running, their first order of business is really to get to know our community and our schools, our school community and our parent community, and, and really everyone in town. They will help the committee to form subcommittees. Those will include things like communications, design, I, I don't even know. So, they will also do a lot of programming research, meaning that they will go to the schools, talk to the teachers, talk to the administration, find out how they use their current spaces, what works, what doesn't work. They will more than likely talk to some kids. They will be responsible for the majority, well, not the majority, but the, they'll, they'll be responsible for coordinating the outreach that we have, whether that be to parents, community members, staff, whatever that is. And then, they also, obviously, I mean, because they're an architecture firm, right? This is what you expected, they work on the design. They also work on the site selection, the cost analysis, and like, so much more. And if you've ever felt like you are like, "What is happening with the building steering committee, and like, what's our role here?", I think the answer is that we've really been waiting to choose this firm, because once the firm comes on, these are all architectural engineering firms, this is what they do. They are, are able to like see the big picture, they've done this a million times, they set a schedule, it includes outreach, it includes all of the, you know, touring other buildings, it includes all kinds of things. And that's really what their expert, expertise is on, and that's why we're using them. Okay, that was a lot of talking. I'm sorry, but I felt like I hadn't given a really in-depth analysis of what we've been doing. So, I just want to make sure, Alicia, doesn't have any, do you have anything to add? I totally did that.
No, thank you very much for doing that.
And, so, I'm happy to have you ask questions now. If I can answer them, I'm, I'm happy to. I also just want to make sure that you know that Alicia and I are both available. If you have questions outside of a meeting that you've thought of, not only are you all welcome to attend a building steering committee meeting at any time, but feel free to email us, or, or email Andrew, who's the chair. He's also like so open and so excited and willing to talk about this. So, yeah. A lot of silence, guys.
I appreciate you doing this, this is Mr. Nice recap, sorry.
The only thing I really wanted to say is that, you know, I was thinking back, as you started talking, that my first thought was, wow, we formed this building steering committee to, to answer one question, and look how far they've gone. And then, the more I thought about it, I realized that in our conversations we had with the Wentworth people, when we talked with them at the very beginning, before this committee even existed, the two things they said was that you need to find a group of people, which is largely community-driven, that will take this and run with it, that'll be excited about it, that'll do this work, keeping the district and the board involved, but that the board really shouldn't, or should resist, driving this process. And what you've just described is exactly what they told us to do, and we didn't even, at least from my perspective, it's, it's just happened. And now, to see it summarized in two slides is actually really exciting, because you have dedicated people, community members with a lot of expertise, you've got board involvement all the way through, you've got the district leadership at the table. It, it's just really exciting to see it moving forward this way. I think for a while, I, I speak for myself, I kind of didn't really, I'd gone to a few meetings, I wasn't exactly sure what, what had gone on, and to see it all listed out like this, it's overwhelming just how much you guys have done. So, thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't think to list it out like this before, but I'm glad that it's helpful.
Chris?
It is, again, thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you before. I'm glad to see this, and would echo everything that Nick has said, and obviously, a ton of work has gone into this. My only question, I think, is, I don't know if you guys have this, or not, but a timeline, like an updated timeline based on when you expect to sign a contract, and our endpoint, just-
Yeah, so, originally, I had made a pretty little timeline. And I, and, and I didn't put that in there for, mostly because, as of like now, that is still actually the timeline that we're working from, but I know that it's gonna change, because I know that part of what an architectural and engineering firm will do is to really, like dig into that timeline and, and get much more granular than what we had. So, I mean, yes and no, so, so that is part of their job, and, and like I said, they, that timeline will have everything on it. I mean, it'll be a bunch of overlapping rectangles of stuff. And so, yeah, so, so I guess my, my, I don't really have a good answer to that, except that that's kind of like what their job is. And I think that we've been talking a lot about the, whether we can make, whether we want to pursue the November date, or whether we want to move out to the June date. And I think the consensus is, you know, these firms are gonna make this happen no matter what date we give them. And what we want to make sure of, once we have our firm chosen, is that we want to, we want them to help us as part of that analysis, to say, "Do we have enough time to do this right in this amount of time?". And they need to be able to say yes, but they also need to be able to say no to us if they don't think that's the case. So, I don't really have a-
That's a super answer for you on that one, sorry.
Does that sound right to you, Alicia?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. This was super helpful for me, too. I'm still in awe at how much has been accomplished in a short amount of time.
Finance Committee?
I will be doing the finance committee updates, since Sarah's unable to be with us. I have very exciting news. The impact fees were approved last night. So, this is something that we've been talking about since the fall. We knew that the, just to give a refresher, we knew that the Eight Corners Modular Project, going way back, we accessed the impact fees account for the first time last spring, in order to obtain $260,000 to pay for a set of modular classrooms at Eight Corners, to accommodate the kids who came in this year, and to alleviate some of the space issues that they were having at Eight Corners. The impact fee account is overseen by an ordinance, and the town council has control over that account in terms of us being able to withdraw those funds. And so, to move us forward in time, after the trailers arrived, and our facilities modulars arrived, our facilities manager, Todd Jepson, had some overages that we were not anticipating, all kinds of things, and that's been presented to us several times, things like the sprinkler system that needed to be done, and there were a few other things. And so, we ended up with an overage on that, on that project. As a finance committee, we met and discussed whether or not we would like to use existing CIP funds to pay down that overage, or whether we were going to approach town council to request impact fees once again. We all kind of agreed with Kate's guidance that we would try and access the impact fee account first, rather than see where we could pull CIP money from. It was going to have an impact if we used our existing CIP money. It was going to come away from something that we were planning on doing. And so, long story short, we submitted our request to the town council, and they put us on the agenda last night. They discussed it. There was some questions about the ordinance, because the original ordinance, the wording of the ordinance is significantly out of date, and so the town council knows that that's something that they need to address on their end. There was some discussion about whether or not this was, this was considered an appropriation, which would be an increase to our overall budget, which obviously, we are not allowed to do, because our vote, our budget is approved by the voters. And so, there was discussion about whether or not this qualified as appropriations. They had their lawyer weigh in on that, and the lawyer decided, he said that it was not considered that, that this is a fund that the town council has that is, that they can spend from. And so, technically, and they amended the motion that, that was originally submitted, to say that the town manager is actually going to be able to access those fees. And so, he and Kate will be in touch with how exactly that transaction happens. But, long story short, we are, we are going to pay for that overage out of the impact fee account. Also, from the town side, the annual auditors' report workshop happened a couple of weeks ago. Nick and Kristen and I were in attendance. Great news, there was no recommendations, and in auditor speak, that means that there wasn't anything with the school side of the audit that needed to be addressed whatsoever. And so, we essentially got a clean bill of health and, and a grateful audit team, because our staff is so easy to work with, and all of our dots, our Ts were crossed and our Is were dotted. For your calendar, we have a lot of budget-related meetings coming up. Some of these are just committee meetings, but for the community's interest, I put them up on the slide. So, Monday, March 16th, we have our next finance committee meeting. Then Tuesday, March 24th, and Wednesday, March 25th are our budget workshops. This, this is the big meeting that we have every year with our leadership council. The full leadership council attends, the full board attends. And it's really the first opportunity that we get as a school board to hear from each department, what their budget drivers are this year, and kind of gives us a preview of what their requests are gonna be. And it also, it also informs our decision-making, because they present to us in terms of why their priorities are, what they are. And so, that's a really great learning opportunity for us. Sidebar to that is, we have invited town council to attend those sessions as well. Monday, March 30th, we have another regular scheduled committee meeting. And then Wednesday, April 1st, is the town council FY21 budget presentation by Sandy to the town council. And the way we've structured it this year is that Sandy will do his presentation to the town council, and it's a non-action item for them. And then, the following night, we will get an abbreviated version maybe, because we will have been so entrenched in it, but Sandy will present the budget to us for first reading. That's all?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, absolutely.
I'm sorry.
We, those meetings on the 24th and 25th, we don't get any materials in advance of that, correct?
So, right now, Sarah has been working with Kate to get the budget books out to us in advance, us being the finance committee and the board. In years past, they have been working on that book right up until the 11th hour. And so, Sarah-
I put it last year.
And we did, we did, we had it a couple days early last year. And so, Kate definitely is aware that we would like to have it. And so, the hope is that we'll have it a few days early.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, before I talk about this monstrous table, I just want to do a, a brief kind of history overview as to how we got to this point. So, going back over the last several months, I'm not gonna recap every single one of them. What I'll say is, we've had a lot of very rich conversations in long-range planning, talking about, you know, enrollment, certainly about the evolving primary school project, looking at the, the condition of our facilities, and, and we've had some great conversations. But, what we really wanted to do was actually think about, what was something we could bring to the conversation? And actually, we, I reached out to Andrew, who's the chair of the building steering committee, to say, you know, "What can long-range planning do, facilities planning do, to enrich this conversation, and really talk about this from a district-wide perspective?". And so, in January, we had a meeting where this idea kind of came out of our conversation, of getting our heads around exactly how many classrooms we had at our different schools, how many of those classrooms were brick and mortar, or permanent structure versus in a portable? And then, also, looking at how many of those classrooms are used as standard classrooms. And, and this was for a couple reasons. One, we really want to think about contingency planning, it's been one of our topics as of late, you know, we, we all know that there's several building projects that are circling around our, our community, and it would be irresponsible of a planning committee not to say, "Okay, so what do we do if we can't do anything? And what does that mean for us? And how does that impact our students in our district?". So, that was part of it. The other part of it was really just saying, you know, we need to get our heads around exactly how our curriculum has changed, because we've talked about that a few times, both in open meetings and in committee meetings, to say, you know, the schools today aren't what they were 20 years ago. And I've often used the analogy in saying that, you know, you have primary schools, it's not just a bunch of classrooms with little yellow raincoats on hooks and lunchboxes. There's a lot more that happens in those buildings. And I wanted to try and find a way, as the chair of the committee, to quantify that, and actually start to talk about it through some district, descriptive analytics, which is what I do for a living. So, I asked, at the end of the meeting, for our assistant superintendent to go up to the building administrators and gather some information from them, specific to the types of classrooms that they have and how they're used. The principals were able to get that to her, she was able to then get it back to the committee, and then I put it into this table. So, that gets us to where this table is. So, I'm just gonna walk through, I'm not gonna do a reading of every line of this thing, but I'll just tell you exactly what it is. So, in the blue, for each of our schools, except the high school, because the high school's a little bit more complicated in how they use classrooms. We do have the data from them, but it's a little more tricky to put it into this type of table. We will get it formatted like this, but it's just gonna take a little more time. But right now, most of our conversations are about middle school through primary anyway, so I thought it was important to get this data out for everyone. So, in the blue, getting back to that, we have our brick and mortar classroom count for each of our schools. And I also totaled up K-2 as a phase at the bottom. We have the number of those classrooms that are used as standard classrooms, and then a percentage that is derived from those two values. Replicate that for any of the buildings that have portables, that's in the green, and then, some of the whole thing, same format in yellow, basically combines all the classrooms together, so that in the far right of this table, we can see overall what percentage of our classrooms, portable and brick and mortar, are used as standard classrooms versus used in other ways. And so, your question is going to be, "What are those other ways?". And so, let's go to the next slide. So, on this slide, I pulled in Sandy's brand-new, fresh enrollment numbers that he presented just moments ago, and that's in the call, the third column there, for the same school, same order. And then, I took a look at the number of standard classrooms that are used in each of those buildings, to get a basic average students per classroom. Of course, there's variability in this, but looking across it, I, I'll speak for myself, and I'm sure you'll all have questions about it. The first thing that jumped out to me was how high this number was. I actually thought it was lower. I, I had heard anecdotally that, you know, our primary school classrooms were more like 17 or 18, I remember hearing that. So, to see it up at 19 doesn't sound like a big jump, but that is a significant difference when you think about the scale of this. The last two columns bring in that non-standard classroom use, and I did that really for space savings, I just didn't want to make a whole other slide. So, here we have a number of non-standard classrooms in each of the schools, and then the principals were kind enough to provide for us exactly how those classrooms are used, and so I actually listed those out there. So, you can see some of the variety, there's a lot of special education needs in each of those boxes, but there's also specialist classes that are happening, there's institutional coaches, instructional, I'm not institutional, instructional coaches, instructional support spaces, speech and occupational therapy, and a whole host of other things. All- other things. All, a lot of which has evolved in the course of the last several years. I know Hillary has a chart that I always talk about, the chart that unfolds, that shows, you always have it with you, don't you?
I always, I carry it everywhere.
That shows just how much, in a different way, all of our demands on public education has increased. And so, before I open it up, this is the beginning of our conversation, I'll also say that the Long Range Planning Committee, Facilities Planning Committee, has actually not seen this data like this yet. It was tabled at our last meeting, because of one of those robust conversations I was referencing earlier. But I wanted to get up in front of the whole Board, as a way to kind of just, kind of premiere it. The Long Range Planning, Facilities Planning Committee will be discussing this for the majority, if not all, of our agenda at our next meeting. So, of course, members of the public that are listening from home, because we know we don't have any here, you're welcome to attend those meetings, of course. But I just wanted to get this out for everyone to talk about, to think about. And I want to just end by saying thank you to all the principals who took time out of their busy days to pull this together, and for, to Diane, for shepherding this information back and forth, so that we could look at it tonight and in future meetings. There it is.
Any questions? Kristin?
I don't know. I love this. I've already told Nick, I think this is so wonderful to have, not just for your long-range planning, but for the Building Steering Committee. There, it's, one thing that was interesting to see is, you know, art and music being shared space in two of the buildings, where a third building has, it, you just, it highlights some of the differences that you see, school to school. I think also, if you sit and do some simple math, which I did this afternoon, you can see sort of what's gonna happen to the middle school a few years down the road, that we really need to look at. I just, I love this, and thank you so much for putting it together.
Agreed.
This was a lot of data. Thank you for pulling it all together in a way that made sense.
I, I'll chime in, too, because I'm a slow processor, so I'm gonna need to spend quite a bit of time looking at this. But thank you very much for putting this together, and I will, I will be forwarding my questions along.
Can I ask one more question on this? And it sort of goes to the Building Steering Committee a little bit, to long-range planning, but when is that, like, is that also another thing, waiting for the firm to be hired to determine what grades are gonna go in this new building? Like, how will they approach that?
I'm a little bit murky. I, I mean, I, yes and no, I would say. Because I'm, I guess I'm a little bit murky as to whether that's gonna be, I think that is a board decision, but I just don't know if it's board-driven or not. Like, do we look at ourselves and say, this is what we want you to do? That is an option. I think the, I think the more probable option is that, because that is something that we are asking of our firms, is to, is to be able to facilitate some solutions for our district. They're gonna be doing so much research, like, boots down in the schools, that I feel like that is something that they would be able to come back to us and say, like, here's kind of what we see, and, and here's like, I don't know. I mean, they could even say, here's five solutions. And for us to look at, that's my guess, as to how that's gonna go down. I mean, like I said, there's always, if, I'm only one person, if the Board decides that that's a decision they're making, and I'm sure any firm will just, you know, go with what we've asked them to do. But I do think that that's a valuable resource, when they're doing all that research anyway, to, for them to come back to us and give us some options. It hasn't been forgotten about for sure, because I can, I mean, anyone can see that the middle school's in trouble.
From a long-range planning perspective, the one thing I'll add is that, the, one of the meetings I came to for the Building Steering Committee, I can't remember which committee member it was, but someone was talking about, when your firm comes in, they can design the school to do whatever you want it to do. And so, I think one of the valuable things the firm, once selected, will be able to bring to us, will be able to show us, like, this is how we could design a school if you kept it K2. This is how we could design it if it was K3. And someone was even, I remember off the top of their head, saying, you could set it up as two separate schools, with two separate driveways, with common space in the middle, and that way, you'd only have two grades in each school. And this was just an idea he floated off the top of his head. But when I think about the value that these firms will bring in, I think, once we can actually see what that would look like, it will help us as a Board make a more informed decision. Because right now, I think it's tough to get away from, and I'm sure you've heard it, and I know I've heard it in the community, people having this kind of internal idea of like a civic center, where you drop off little tiny children and hope they find their classroom. It's gonna be very, very different than that, and it's one of the advantages, I think, of being able to design the school from scratch. And Hillary said it earlier, these firms, no matter which one we select, I'm sure will be ready to hit the ground running, and be able to show us different solutions that'll meet those core values that you typed up, Hillary, thank you, and give us a better idea of how shifting our phases around could look.
And I just, I think that, just from, just from looking at the RFQ responses, and, and talking to people yesterday, I think that the amount of research and experience that they have making these schools seem, making these schools appropriate, is amazing. Like, even just looking at, and like I said, this is super high-level information that they're giving us. This isn't even really drilling down into any of the details, but they think of, I mean, they think of, like, the entrance to the school. If this is gonna be a big building, they want to actually design it so that, and this is just, I think, a general architectural ideology, but they want to design it so that the bulk of the building is actually hidden, so that when the kids, these little kids are coming up to the front entrance of the building, they're seeing it as small and welcoming. And like, those are things that we worry about, but don't think about the solutions for. And I don't know if I ever would've thought of solutions. And other things like, like, you don't have one super-long hallway, you have hallways that are, that are like jagged, not jagged, but like, what is that word? Like, they're not, they, they take like little angles, and so that if you're-
I was gonna say zigzag.
Zigzag, not zigzag. I'm just trying to explain it, but like, so that when you're a five-year-old, you're not looking down this gigantic corridor, and going, oh my God, what's at the end of that? You know, and they design like, I mean, they have everything from like, you know, pods of classrooms, that each had their own eating area, to, you know, dividing up, to dividing up into, you know, three different capsules, and then having common areas in the middle. I mean, the amount of, the amount of time, research and energy that's gone into making these schools and designing them, like, properly, for the, either for the developmental age of the kids, well, definitely for the developmental age of the kids, but also, like, keeping in mind how big the school is overall, and what ages are in it, is, is pretty amazing. And it's really cool to see. So, I'm super excited to have that be more specific to us, like, that information, because I've seen so much of it, and it's really exciting. And, I mean, Sandy and Alisha have seen it, too. Like, it's really cool to look at, but it'll be interesting to see how it is, is like, really specific for Scarborough.
And it should be comforting to know that it's not a novel concern to Scarborough.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, this is what they do. That's the concern that everybody has, when they're building these schools. So, they've done it, and they have solutions, and they just need to work to what we need them to do.
One example was actually like, a main entrance, that was really basically only for parents and visitors. And then, like, there were three different pods of schools, and kids entered their school through the pod that they go to school in. And those doors were only open for drop-off and pick, actually, I think just, no, drop-off and pickup. They, so they, they felt, I mean, they're going into this little, small school, and those, they're locked for the rest of the day, for security, obviously, and then there's another, a separate main entrance, that's where, you know, visitors and packages. And there's like, some really cool ideas out there.
Cool. What was your question?
I think I went way off-topic, sorry.
No, it's good.
It's just really exciting. It's like, really cool stuff.
Just as an observation, I love seeing you this animated about it. Like, it's getting me more excited. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Curriculum Committee?
Yeah, we had our first Curriculum Committee meeting since I've been on the Board. It's a pretty new group, correct? I think Nick is continuing on, and that's it. We talked about the 2020 Building Walks, and Monique is gonna work with the Leadership Council to get us some dates. You all know far more about those than I do, but they sounded to be a huge success.
Best day of the year. Super fun. So, I don't, I don't wanna, I'm gonna interrupt. I'm gonna say, I don't wanna interrupt, and then I'm gonna do it. Last year, I don't think the intent was to have the full Board. I think the intent was to have the Curriculum Committee, and then I kind of like, snuck my way on to those, because someone wasn't able to go. And so, my request would be that the whole Board is-
Yes, it will be the whole Board.
-able to go.
It will be the whole Board.
Or offered.
Right. Thank you.
Is that the day where you got to, like, crowdwalk?
Yeah.
Yes.
I played basketball, I crowdwalked, I did a PE class at Blue Point. I don't know, I was like, it was super fun. Kids, some people, some people, not my group, but some people at the high school did like a science experiment with marshmallows or something. Anyway.
Hmm. They sound fun.
Yeah, those will become.
It's a fun day. It's a fun opportunity for us to get in the schools, for sure.
The other thing we talked about was the Curriculum Guide for families, which sounds like it's going to be super cool. It got put a little bit on the backburner, just because Kathy has some other pressing responsibilities, but they're gonna be back on that in the summer. And then, iReady was another thing that we talked about, the new assessment tool that we started this year. And it sounds like the feedback from the teachers has been great so far. They're using it. I think Monique said what it was like, almost all of the teachers have access to these additional tools that they have, which have been free so far, but they will not be free next year. So, you guys, as a Finance Committee, should be expecting to see that.
All right. Ladies and Grouse, the Community Center Committee, quick update. Town Council, the presentation from the Ad Hoc Committee is taking place this Wednesday night, I believe at 6 o'clock. But I had sent to everybody the very done report, for folks at home. That consultant report is on the Town website, along with the very large presentation that the Ad Hoc Committee put together regarding the Community Center. So, it'll be interesting to see how that presentation goes Wednesday night. Town Council?
A lot of what I was, I would give for a Town Council update has been covered by other committees, so I don't, I don't think I have much to add to there. Vocational hasn't met since the last time we did committee updates. My next meeting is Thursday, the 19th. But since then, and I forward this to the Board, it came from Diane also, was that survey. And mostly, I wanted everyone on the Board to weigh in, to play around with the software. That was a piece of software that we had looked at several years ago. It's called Thought Exchange. It comes with a very hefty price tag. And so, Gorham has a license for it, and so, we were able to, they generously put together the thought experiment for the Vote program, so that we could use that software. And so, I will report out on what exactly that looks like. I'm excited to see how they present that, the results of that survey.
It looked like a pretty cool tool.
Yeah.
The pre-k task force, so Diane and I met to sort of talk about reconvening the task force that existed quite some time ago. So, we're sort of just at a point of pulling, Diane's pulled a lot of information about surrounding towns, about what that, how many students we might serve here. It's really so open-ended, and this is another thing where it's difficult. It can't just be, in my opinion. So, at some point, I think we as a Board have to talk about why we're looking at this now. You know, the CDS, the bill about moving CDS to the local schools, was recommended ought not to pass. So, that's sort of off the table. And then, the pre-K thing was pushed out to 25?
23, 24, 24.
So, there's not a huge sense of urgency, but we should still look at it. And again, Diane and I have looked at some stuff we need to probably need again, and plan next steps.
Can I just ask, and I don't know if you noticed, but, so, if that was pushed out to 23, 24, does that mean that they're not even gonna talk about it again until 23, 24? Or that would be the target for having pre-K?
That's the target for having it?
Okay.
Right. So, the original date was 2017, 2018.
Right.
And so, they just pushed it well forward. And so, you know, the wonder would be, is that going to happen again before 23, 24?
23, 24. So, that's really only three years.
Because Governor Mills hasn't had much success in getting more funding for that.
I read that, yeah.
She had put in for $7 million last year, and that did not pass.
Yeah.
And then, CNA?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass CNA to Kristen. She was able to go, and I was not.
I'm gonna read the charge from Sandy's email to the entire Carver Hands and Needs Assessment Committee, just because it's a good refresher for me. But it's to review various data and evidence pertaining to student performance in district effectiveness, and then identify strengths and areas for improvement. So, this was the first meeting we've had this year. We had three last year, I think. So, this was the first one we had this year, and just covered some of the district goals, one of the big ones being social-emotional learning, which everyone's going to start hearing a lot about. But broke into our groups and talked by the different phase levels. It's, the attendance was a little bit down, I would say. So, it would be nice to sort of pick that back up. But it's a good chance for everyone to talk. There's some community members there. Are there anything pressing coming out of that?
Right on. Good. Great. Lots happening, for sure. All right. Our one item of new business. Can I have a motion, please, to accept the meeting minutes of the workshop for February 27th, 2020, as written?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? And all those in favor? Okay. Motion passed. As you know, it's like... Before we close, April, thank you last week for covering. Really appreciate that. I'm sure everyone, after getting, hearing what had happened, understood why I wasn't here, were probably grateful that I wasn't, so that I didn't share anything. That said, 11.0, is it a motion to adjourn? Is there such a motion?
So moved?
Second.
And all those in favor? Fantastic. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.